Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Mersky. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
This morning, ask that we remember those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are, remember those who've lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. Also, ask our God and our Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Approval of minutes from the meeting of December 16th, 2015, and bills for payment on January 8th and 15th, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Mersky. I have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that Mr. Bob Mersky is appointed city council president for 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. Congratulations.
Don't sit down.
Councilman Brennan, on behalf of all of us on city council, we wanted to thank you for your service in leading us in 2015. As council president, you were diligent in your work, and you always put the best interests of the city at heart. So, to honor you and recognize you, we'd like to give you this plaque to commemorate your term of service.
It's been an honor this past year to serve as a leader of council. It's definitely been a challenging year. A lot of issues have come up, but I believe we've worked hard. We've worked well together. Everyone has a different opinion, which is, I think, what's great about council, everyone really has, brings something special to the table. You know, great experience up here, and definitely value everyone up here's opinions immensely, our staff, Ms. Roby, everybody. I think we did a great job, and we want to continue to do even a better job this year. I'm looking forward to a great year in 2016. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll continue on with the meeting. Request for repository sales. Are there, is there anyone here for repository sale?
Hi, my name is Amber Ryan. I live at 2922 Florence Avenue. It's located between Burton and Tuttle on the east side. Interested in buying the property that's directly south of mine. It's just a vacant lot. There's no structure on the property. I've lived in the house and owned it since 2013, and have been maintaining that property since then. When we moved in, the grass was, I would say, waist-length. Half of it is grass, half of it is just wooded. I just want to extend my property and put my fence around it, and continue to mow it and snowblow it. That's it. Won't put a structure on it, just want a bigger yard. Thank you.
Any questions from any of our council members? Okay, thank you. We won't vote on it at this time, but we will vote on it at the next meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other requests for repository sales?
You have an entrance song.
Bishop, you got theme music.
Mel did that.
Right on cue.
Happy New Year to everyone. Good morning, and congratulations to Mrs. Arrington. I married her and her husband years ago, and taught Councilman Jones in school, and I'm trying to be a good leader for a very interesting member of our church, Melvin Witherspoon. There you go, some music again. So, good morning. Once again, we're looking at a piece of property at 1110 East 12th Street, which is vacant, and as you know, we have developed that entire area. As far as our church is concerned, our ministry, we have several buildings on that area. That area right now is vacant. We take care of it. We keep the grass mowed. We keep the rubbish off of the property. Our intentions is to pave it and use that as an entrance into the property there that houses our entire ministry, the Word of Faith Development Corporation. We have already put down on the property, and we understand that this is the proper process that we have to go through. So, again, that's at 1110 East 12th Street, right adjacent to the Victory Christian Center. We would like for council to consider giving that property to the Victory Christian Center.
Any questions? Thank you, Bishop.
Thank you very kindly.
Are there any other requests for repository sales?
Morning. My name is Jose Caban. I own 1210 East 22nd Street in Erie. Looking to purchase the lot next to my property, west of my property. I've been living there for 10 years, been taking care of that lot there. Nobody mows it, nobody cleans it. I just put a $10,000 privacy fence around my property. I've got my place looking nice, but the lot next to it, with all the rubbish and everything, it just looks bad. And I would like to have the chance to own it, so I could keep the place nice and clean, and just make the neighborhood a nicer place to live in. And I appreciate if you guys let me have that spot.
Thank you. Do you plan to build any structures on it?
No, just fence it in, and, you know, keep the grass, and just make my yard look nicer, and more private, and nicer for the neighborhood.
Any questions from council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other requests for repository sales? Any other requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard. Our first citizen that signed in was Randy Barnes.
Good morning, President, council, administration, staff, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. And over the holidays, I was asked, why isn't you really care what goes on in the city of Erie? You don't live in the city of Erie, Barnes. Well, I did own a home in the city of Erie for 10 years. I drive part of my income from businesses that operate in the city of Erie. I can tell you, I destroyed a tire once driving through the city of Erie because of the potholes. And I don't think that we can be so short-sighted to think that the county can survive with a weak city. And so, I, like many county residents, are concerned about what happens in the city. One thing I realized while thinking about today's meeting is, our former council president, Mr. Brennan, served for the past 12 months, and each month spent $1,000 to pay former city clerk to do what he does down here. You know, Mr. Brennan was one of those people voted against it. So, for an entire year, while he was president, he felt he could have gotten along without Mr. Clem. And now our new incoming president, Mr. Mersky, was also one of those people that voted against paying this former retiree, or this retiree, $1,000 a month. In fact, I don't have the exact quote. It was something like, "We can't afford this type of luxury." So, right now, we have about a six months or $6,000 left to pay this former city clerk. And not that the money can be directly transferred to other things, but I wonder, after listening to Ms. Arrington on TV, how much good $6,000 could be used toward funding some programs that would help some inner-city youth? Instead, council is going to go along, and Mr. Clem is going to be so happy to collect $1,000 a month for basically doing, I'm not sure, because if we look back, all the microfilm files are, it's done. According to Mr. Clem, on August 18th of this year, sent to city council, he said that everything's progressing, and to finish the rest of the conversion process before the end of the year. So, now all these files have been documented and turned from microfiche into electronic files by Prillo Enterprises over here on Praig Street. And I have to wonder, after a year and a half, has Mr. Clem done his job and trained incoming clerk, or current clerk, Ms. Roby? I would think in a year and a half would provide sufficient amount of time to train the new clerk, because obviously that wasn't done before Mr. Clem left. He decided not to train anyone and hold council hostage and say, "You have to have me for two years if you want to survive." And those four council people thought, "Yeah, we'd better have him for $1,000 a month." And those four people were Witherspoon, Winarski, Kunsou, and Jones. Now, how many, how much of time have you four council people, three, I guess now because Ms. Kunsou has left, have you spent trying to train Ms. Roby and get her up to speed? That's what I thought. Probably no time. Because I question in my mind whether Ms. Roby needed much training from Mr. Clem, or was this just a friends-and-family kind of, let's give the outgoing retiree the $68,000 pension and another $1,000 a month to do basically nothing, except to come down and hang out and drink free coffee. So, I would encourage Mr. Clem to do the right thing, and give notice that you are no longer needed down here, and let's save council that $6,000. Because obviously, past President Brennan didn't think he needed to help, and incoming president, the new president, Mersky, didn't feel he needed to help, because they both voted against you getting $1,000 a month, Mr. Clem. So, let's do the right thing. You finished your project on the microfilm. According to the August 18th, you were done, going to be done before the end of the year.
Mr. Barnes, please address council. We're not addressing Mr. Clem. Thank you.
Okay, council, why don't you do the right thing, and talk to Mr. Clem, and say, you know what? We've had your services. We've got all the electronics, or the paperwork, digitized, or whatever it was that Prillo Enterprises is doing for us. Why don't you ask him to do the right thing, and resign, and give that $1,000 back for the next six months, and let council use it for something else, or the city use it for something else? Because if it's not used, it'll be in the general fund at the end of the year, and that'll be just that much less in taxes or revenue you have to raise. So, I would appreciate you considering that, because I think as a strong council, there should be someone up there that says, "You know what, Mr. Clem, off the side, that I think that we've had your services long enough. I think Ms. Roby and her staff has learned how to prepare an agenda, and I think as we seven council people, all with experience, except for their incoming Ms. Arrington, have a lot of years of experience." Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Next on our citizens to be heard is Amy Comptore.
Good morning, council. Welcome, Ms. Arrington and incoming president, Mersky. First, I would like, before I get into the restructuring of EMTA issue, I would like to give thanks to Chuck Scalise of Hans and Dave Dieter for helping secure the Hans facility for the Downtown Neighborhood Association. It'll be held every first Wednesday of the month at 4:00 PM. We will be starting in February. I'm just getting the flyers issued today. Dave Dieter just sent me a few flyers I have to overlook, and we're going to be distributing them out over the course of the next month. Those will be in your mailboxes soon regarding that. We're to come on that at another time. In regards to EMTA, EMTA is a business. It is a service that the city uses, the city residents. I understand you have the city's citizens at most at heart. I understand that. I understand you want to look out for us, all of us. One of the problems that we have here between politicians of council on city and council in county is that EMTA is being used as a political pawn piece. We're talking about nine seats, a six-and-three division. As long as that six-and-three division stands, that kind of division invites a power play. If we were to equal that out, the city have three seats, the county retain their three, and give three to ridership, perhaps one disabled, one for somebody like perhaps Mr. Barber, to be a businessman that has business input with people who use the bus system in the city, and another one to a different type of, perhaps, the paratransit be represented on the board. Because none of the existing nine board members on EMTA's board currently, whether we're talking city or county, those representatives, which the cities is appointed by the mayor, so you have, I'm going to try not to be politically correct here, you have the mayor's political puppets, and then you have the county's political puppets. And nobody is trying to think of what's in the best interest for the people this service serves, okay? They're just engaged in the power play, and what's at risk here, if this doesn't solidify in the next eight months by September, is that we're going to see our city buses go extinct. We're going to see a massive amount of jobs being taken away from drivers, from directors, from everybody. I also know of no structure where a CEO is secondary to the board that it serves, okay? That the board tells the CEO what to do, which is the current setup of the EMTA authority. The board should respond ideally to Mike Tan, who is executive director/CEO. And then, if there is something that brings something worth a debate over, Mike should be able to have veto power, and say, "Okay, that gets, that's not in the best interests of our ridership. That should be put aside." Then it should go to a public hearing, and have everybody brought together. And then, after the public hearing, and another go-through through the board, and up to Mike Tan again, if he says no again, and with the veto power, then it doesn't go through. If it goes through successfully on that second time around, then so be it. This would be a restructuring of the EMTA process. I'm going to be meeting up with them tomorrow, and we're going to be talking more in detail. There's also a ordinance here from council that was, that is dated February 4, 2015, resolved that the city council of Erie, in accordance with the Municipal Authorities Act 53PA-CSA subsection 5601, hereby adopts a resolution enacted by the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority on January 26, 2015. I'll close it up with the fact that that was a 20, that was a 50-year charter. 50 years is too long for anything. Leases only go for one to five years.
Thank you for your time, Amy. Up next on our citizens to be heard, Glenn Cessna.
Happy New Year, council, and good morning. The subject that I want to talk about today is what I'm calling the right-of-way, is I want to define specifically the area between the curb and the property line. That's known as the right-of-way, but the property owner has instilled with the proper care and maintenance. So that I can set up the problem I'm having, I'm going to go through a few scenarios for you, and you may even think this is a scene from Andy Mayberry, where it's a joke what's going on out here. I had an incident where Gannon had their homecoming, and they had the semi-trucks come down, because they're pulling their floats. The semi-truck managed to get into my property on Fifth Street, pull into the alleyway, and leave huge ruts in my property. So, thinking it was a Gannon problem, I called Gannon Police, and that's when Barney Fife showed up, told me that he wouldn't be any help to me, that students protected under the information rights, they couldn't give me information on the student. So, I found out the student's name, got the information from the trucking company, and then called the Erie Police. So, when Erie Police showed up, I had the trucking company and the student that directed the truck to go on my property. But Erie Police told me that that was not my property. The curb, between the curb and sidewalk, the little planting strip, was not my property, therefore I could not make a complaint. So, we kind of ended it there. We move on to one of my other properties, and I had a call from the code enforcement, that there was dog waste on the premise. So, I went down and checked with the tenant. Hey, what's going on? Well, that's not my dog. That's the neighbor's dog. Okay, here we go again. Well, I had cameras up at this time, so we were able to go back and view the cameras. I called the Erie Police. So, here we are with Erie Police, and the tenant, myself, out examining dog waste, trying to determine whose dog the waste came from. But Erie Police, once again, informed me that I couldn't make a complaint, because that was not my property. It was in the planting strip between the curb and the sidewalk. We're going to have one, two more instances. Another incident, the U-Haul drives over my yard, because they couldn't get to their driveway, because there was a car blocking it, called Erie Police, and get the same thing. Everybody knows that's city property, so I asked him, "Well, if it's city property, then why don't you, officer, file a complaint for the property damage that's happened to the city?" And he said he wasn't able to do that, so I don't know if we have a department in the city where we have, can make complaints for city property that I have to mow, maintain, and take care of. The fourth and final, and this isn't all the instances, I'm just setting a backdrop for the instance that happened. The, a business was placing garbage on my property. As we know, in the city of Erie, we have a problem with refuse. I think we're getting somewhere of getting that corrected. But if you're a business owner, you are required to pay for your own refuse disposal, correct? But they didn't want to pay for disposal, so they were placing it on my property. So, I called the Erie Police and made a complaint. And you know what they told me? "That's not my property. I can't make a complaint, because that's city property. Everybody knows that." Well, I wouldn't take that for an answer, so we pursued it diligently. Come to find out, this business owner had been doing this for a number of years, and been cited before. So, finally, through push and shove, and me talking to Fred Rush with the mayor's office, we got, on video camera, I have her putting the garbage out, got her citation, and got her cited. So, I've been through papers upon papers upon papers, trying to find where we can define in the ordinance, the definition that that property, even though it is a right-of-way, and I, as a property owner, am instilled with the proper care and maintenance, that the next time I go down to the police department, which I'm the taxpayer, and I pay as many properties I own, I pay about $400 a week in taxes, pay a good tax bill here, and have the police tell me that everybody knows that's not my property, and refuse to do anything about it, so that I can show them the paper. Because I've showed them all these papers, they say, "No, Mr. Cessna, that's not the intent of that. That's not what that means. That's not the intent. That's not what the ordinance says." So, we get this resolved. And the final part of that, in having the person find, the ordinance says... Are we done?
Yeah, that's your time for now. I mean, if you want to leave those documents, or if you want to leave anything with the clerk's office...
Yes, I will leave the document for you.
You can either, Mrs. Roby will come and get them, and we thank you for your time. At this time, we don't have any... Do you think we could squeeze in one more?
No.
All right. We don't have any more. Then, Rose, thank you.
No.
We're going to have to take a pause with citizens to be heard for a public hearing, and we'll allow for the public hearing, and we'll reconvene the meeting after the public
The public hearing is to hear testimony regarding a request to amend the zoning ordinance number 80-2005, sections through 4.45, Article 6, and any other relevant provisions providing for the purposes adding and amending defined terms, establishing certain general and specific standards relating to the location, placement, construction, and maintenance to tower-based wireless communication facilities and non-tower wireless communication facilities.
Okay, at this time, we'll take testimony from anyone in favor of the ordinance, or You can go up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bob Ritter. Government Relations Council with Crown Castle. We're a telecommunications utility, and we have now extensive operations in the city, operating wireless small-cell networks in the right-of-way. And we have worked pretty cooperatively with staff in the last year, and successfully deployed, spoken to Plan Commission about this ordinance, and also with staff. Generally, we have no problem with what the city is looking to adopt. We do have a couple of concerns with the ordinance, and I do have some proposed red lines, which I've shared with Jerry, and which, you know, I've got copies. I'm happy to share with the council. There are a couple concerns, and I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't come in quick enough to mute my phone here. Couple concerns we have, mainly as it pertains to the regulations for the right-of-way, where we have been deploying the small-cell technology. One, which I believe the Plan Commission addressed in their comments to council, concerns the current restrictions on historic districts. Now, currently, there are no city historic districts designated, but as the ordinance currently stands, there'd be an outright ban on any facilities in historic districts. And we think that's a bit too restrictive for the city, particularly for the small-cell installations in the right-of-way, which are very low-impact, and designed to blend in with the surroundings. They're in the least impactful way to serve these areas. We think that the city administration should have some flexibility in the future to be able to allow these installations in historic districts, you know, certainly with some control. And the second major issue is probably an issue of interpretation in the ordinance as drafted. It is, in our reading, not clear how installations of small-cell equipment in the right-of-way would be handled. It appears the intent of the ordinance is that these would be addressed through an administrative approval process with zoning and with engineering, and that certainly has been past practice, and that has worked very well. We have worked together very cooperatively with Public Works and Engineering, and been able to deploy in the right-of-way and provide service to the city. But the text as we're reading is really just a bit unclear. We believe that's the intent. I know this ordinance has been somewhat borrowed from Mill Creek Township. We're working with them. That's the way they're interpreting the ordinance. So, what we have proposed to staff, and certainly I can leave with council today, are some red lines, which we consider really to be technical changes that would address those concerns. So, mainly ask you to consider looking at those couple changes. But generally, Crown Castle is really happy to be here in Erie. We've had a great productive relationship with the city, and we're happy to continue to provide service to the city. Thank you.
Good morning, council. I'm Matt Wirtel. I'm Director of Sales and Marketing with Velocity Network. You may not be aware, but Velocity Network is the largest locally-owned fiber-optic internet company here in the region, and we have been partnering with Crown Castle for over the past year to install roughly 50... for over the past year to install roughly 50 to 60 small cell wireless towers throughout the city of Erie, Mill Creek, and some of township. For us, as a local employer of over 50 individuals, Crown Castle's growth and their relationships with their wireless carriers directly affects our business and our employment, and it also impacts some areas that we've announced last year, our Fiber to the Home Initiative, which we're gonna be rolling out here in 2016. With the partnership with Crown Castle, they've allowed us to build fiber-optic cabling in areas that traditionally would not have been first-pass looks for fiber-to-the-home deployments. For example, we've got very fiber-rich now on the Lower East Side and the best neighborhood. There's parts of Ash Street, whole other areas of the city of Erie that now have fiber-optic capacity due to the efforts of Crown Castle and their wireless partners. So here, as, speaking on behalf of Velocity Network, I also am in line with what Bob is talking about, because he's the expert from Crown Castle. Our position is that the city, or any municipality, should do what's in the best interest of the city, obviously to protect the right-of-way, but from a telecommunications provider's perspective, additional restrictions and additional red tape, and if the ordinance isn't clear, that just creates delays. And in our business, delays in the technology spectrum, the longer it takes to get something done, the longer it takes to install fiber-optic cabling to a business or residential customer, the more frustrated they're going to be, and at the end of the day, we don't want to point a finger and say, "Hey, it's because of the ordinance and the city right-of-way and the city engineering and planning department." Not that that has been a problem, as Bob indicated, but it has been a problem in other municipalities where we've had basically months and months and months of struggle to put up small cell towers due to kind of back-and-forth battles between the municipality. It costs Crown Castle money, it costs Velocity money, it costs us time. So we're here just to say, take a look at what Bob's recommendations are. Obviously, the city's gonna make your final estimation, but continue along the path of making it easy for us as a telecommunications provider to deploy technology. Otherwise, we're gonna have to work with the municipalities that make it the easiest for us to do, because we are a, you know, for-profit entity that's looking to grow our footprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone else in favor? Seeing none, anyone against the ordinance? Or would like to speak against the ordinance? Anyone to speak against?
Counsel, Amy Comperatore, 913 State. Before you consider with the wireless telecommunications process, I hope you consider into the fact of the historical background, things that are going on in our community with the projects that are recently being initiated. If those projects, considering the city boundaries and the aging of our community and in the creation of the historical district, go after this, then there will be even more complications in taking things out that were once put in and destroying potential properties that actually had a real value and sense of worth. And those areas that he is referring to, Ash, the bayfront, the parts of the city that we want to serve with those same telecommunications, that's our center city, that was the very first original borough, and that is what we ought to take care of first before we consider any telecommunications process. Let's get our ducks in a row before considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? Seeing none, at this time, zoning, come forward.
Morning, President and members of City Council. My name's Matt Puzz, I'm with the Erie City Zoning Office and Secretary to the Planning Commission. I am here to read the recommendation from the Planning Commission. The City of Erie Planning Commission, at the regular meeting on December 15, 2015, reviewed a proposed amendment to City of Erie Ordinance Number 80-2005, the zoning ordinance for the city of Erie, for adding and amending defined terms establishing certain general and specific standards relating to the location, placement, construction, and maintenance of tower-based wireless communication facilities and non-tower wireless communication facilities. With regards to the zoning amendment, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the approval of the amendment as presented, with the recommendation that all sections referencing historical districts be removed from the final amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other one to speak? Any questions from council?
Yes, Mr. President, I did have a question for zoning. Is Matt moving it?
He's coming in. Sorry, Matt. Leave just yet.
In the reading just from back from Planning Commission, they said for historic districts, does that mean National Register Historic Districts? We really don't have a city-proclaimed historic district. Is that National Register districts within the city? Because there's three.
It's for any zoning, excuse me, any overlay historical district that would be...
Because we currently don't have any.
Yes, but if, under the current zoning ordinance, we could actually put in a historical district, and they want that section removed in the event that a historical overlay district were to be added.
Okay. So the recommendation of Planning Commission is to...
Eliminate any reference to historical districts from the proposed amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm not sure if, I guess we need to have a little more conversation, but, so since we don't have, particularly in the city, such a historic district, would this ordinance, how would this ordinance interact if we did want to establish said historic district? If there are already maybe these towers that may, you know what I mean, the confusion there? So a later ordinance that we have room to establish in our zoning ordinance, would this get in the way of us doing something like that in the future? I know there's some issues around that general topic right now, identifying, you know, historic districts and properties, et cetera. Is this something that we could work around, work in collaboration with if we wanted to do something in the future around that, ordinance-wise?
Yes, I, under the proposed amendment right now, assuming that the historical districts, sections were left in, any towers in those districts, excuse me, any towers that were to be, or, I don't know where to put this, any towers that exist at the time of the overlay district being implemented would be a non-conforming use.
Right, so grandfathered in, basically.
Yes, exactly.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing, seeing no other comments or questions from council. We'll close this public hearing and move on with our agenda.
Okay, we have to complete citizens to be heard.
We'll continue on with the meeting, citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard?
Richard Wagner, 42nd and State. And I wasn't gonna come down here today, because when I looked at that pile of stuff I'd like to talk about, I could keep you here for an hour instead of five minutes. But there were a couple of things that I wanted to touch base with. The Kansas City trip, Curtis, I tend to look into things, go on Wikipedia. Kansas City, Missouri, they have a 1,400-man police department, 73 policemen devoted to child, youth violence and gangs. And at work, I became a supervisor, this is years ago, and a senior supervisor told me one time, because the guys that I was supervising were my friends, that sometimes you have to hurt somebody to help them. And I think that's where you're headed with that, and it can be a good thing, because that hurt can make something good happen. So, you know, the problem I see with it is, for 100,000 people in any of the bigger cities that I've looked at, they got about 300 policemen per 100,000, and we got 173. So just do the math, it probably isn't gonna work very well for us. But you gotta try something. So, that was that. You know, cost savings. We couldn't come up with anything in that budget to save any money. But at the beginning of January, I look in the paper, Chief Zoning Officer, Assistant Manager, and you're looking for an employee to fill a vacancy of Armin Shemene, who's retiring, and God bless him. Maybe, maybe we didn't need to replace him, because an article by Kevin Flowers who left was talking about the reduced, and see, these are just notes that I scribbled down, the reduced activity in the zoning office. It's almost down 50%. Went from $900,000 in fees, down to $600,000. So maybe there's not that much to do up there. God bless him, I don't know what to do. But we only created 10 homes in the last two years, and that number struck me, just jumped out at me, that in two years, we only built two new houses in Erie. That's really, speaks poorly about the city. But, when I look at this, and going back to my prior experiences, a successful candidate for this zoning officer's job, field of urban studies, zoning, urban planning, and other related areas, a bachelor's degree is preferred. I'm not sure about the fellow that held that job, whether he had any of these credentials when he started, but it sure seems like we groomed this application for maybe a specific individual in the city. That's not good either. This is from December 11, 2015, editorials, negotiated property tax deal, welcome. And this is pet peeve with me, because we allow these authorities to pretend that they're acting independently of government. These are Brenda Sandberg's words, not mine, and this is after she agreed to pay some taxes on some property that they run down at the Port Authority. "We recognize that even though we are a government agency, we still use services," she said. It is really what is right. And her words ring true for every authority in this city that benefits by not paying taxes. And let's look at Lecon. They just bought a building that was paying taxes for $7.9 million, the Regency Senior Center, and they want to get that relieved from taxes. Couple that with Erie Insurance, $32 million worth of property, they want to knock it down to 13 million. I guess I can almost give Erie Insurance a break on theirs, because the assessed value of their property in real time probably is 32 million, but in the city of Erie, because if they didn't use those buildings, they'd just sit idle, and they wouldn't have much value at all. They'd just be empty space. But those were things that I had sitting on my desk that I wanted to talk about, but I didn't take a lot of time preparing. Thank you, Happy New Year.
Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard?
Finally getting up here. Good morning, council. My name is McDonald, my property is 19th and Reed. I got an issue here about the charge of a towing company. I had a vehicle towed from Meadville to Erie, $90. That's all I paid, was $90, and insurance company reimbursed me for that. I got, one of our taxpayers brought this to me. She said she seen me down here, and she wanted me to speak about this on her behalf. Could we give each councilman one of these? There's seven there. Thank you. That's almost $400, right in the city here. I want to know how you go about charging peoples when they're doing, they're towing for you. Don't you have a rate, or can they just charge you what they want to charge you? You should control that as being, you're supposed to be the mothers and the fathers of the city. You say you make the laws. Are those laws just for certain peoples? I'd just like to know. You got it in front of you, almost $400, $10 less than $400, for just about nothing. That don't make sense to me. I want you all to look into this. You're supposed to be running the city, you're supposed to be up there for us, for the taxpayers and the citizens. I want you to look into this, and I want you to get back to me on this, because I want to know. I want to know if you are in charge. Hey, you got those places down there on the bayfront, tax-free, but do everybody in government do what they want to do? It doesn't make sense to me. That should be guidelines for everything. That should be guidelines for everything. You take that impasse down there in Hensburg, that don't even make sense. Just like this, this don't make sense. Do this make sense to you? That? I hope not. What sense could it make? Right in town, you're almost $400. That, that vehicle should have been there for years for that kind of money. She, she told me, a police car was parked out on, in the road, I guess, and it was slick that day, but there's no, you can't make no excuse for it. You hit somebody, you hit them, that's all that's to it. But I see no cause for this kind of pricing. $400? $400? I don't know. Does that make sense to you all? You're supposed to be intelligent people. I hope that the new council lady over there use her own mind and not let nobody direct her. Listen, listen. You all don't have no meetings for the citizens to come and talk to you all about anything. But down here for five minutes, what is five minutes? Five minutes don't give you time to get your mind stirred up. I've been asking you all to give our five minutes back that you took, the 10 minutes back you took. I asked you to stack them up on these few minutes we got here, but I don't know, you're supposed to be honorable people, but when you went, the way you went by that wasn't very honorable. You didn't talk to us about anything. I want you to think about this now. You're honorable peoples. When you're honorable, you got to do things in an honorable way. You can't just do what you want to do. You should have talked to us before you did that.
Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. McDonald?
This is Arrington.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, this is just a time for them to talk, we don't engage in dialogue at this.
Well, when can, when can it be addressed?
After the meeting, she can come talk to you privately. If you want to, you can talk to him, if you want to step out and talk to him in the back, that's, feel free. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Okay, ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 15938, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the Council File Ordinance Number 15938, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15938 by a 7, nays zero on first reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll go on to new business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda. Right, he's like, who are you talking to? David, answer him, he's talking to you. I would like to move the balance of the agenda, or make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon.
Any separations?
Any separations, seeing none? Roll call.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports. Mr. Kwiatowski's out right now. Mrs. Arrington, would you like to give your committee report?
I apologize.
There are no committees. If you'd like to say something, first off, we'd like to welcome Mrs. Arrington to council on behalf of all of us on City Council. We love having you as a calling, and we welcome you and a productive four years with you. So, if you have anything you'd like to say at this time.
Thank you. I'd just like to say it's an honor to be elected to council, and I'm looking forward to moving our city forward in change. We've got a lot of different issues going on in our community, but first and foremost, I want to listen and learn. So, this is a learning process for me. I want to listen to the people in our community to see what their issues are, and to see what we can do as council to help solve some of these issues. So, thank you very much to the Erie community for allowing me to take the seat, to lead our community in change.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, congratulations on your new assignment to help facilitate this bodies like herding cats sometimes, so get it ready. Also, would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Brennan for his service during the year 2015, being diligent and thoughtful in offering us your best in the capacity as president. I appreciate that personally and professionally. The citizen that was just here, Mr. McDonald, had a couple of questions. I know, Mrs. Arrington, we were kind of dialoguing offline a little bit about that, looking at the price, and you know, sometimes when people may watch this meeting or just hear, you know, $400 or $390, I just wanted to know if there was, was it an accident? Like, what are the precipitating issues behind it? Was the individual parked in a zone that says it's X amount of money if you have to be told? I mean, there's a lot of detail there. And then half of that was storage as well, so $140 of that concern was storage. Now, again, it's still $390, so I'm not minimizing that at all, but just, I think it's important to have a little more information in detail about that, so hopefully we can get that in, again, because it's a citizen who has a legitimate, at least, question and concern about the issue. So, I'm sure we will, we'll deal with that. Take a moment, want to take a moment to say congratulations to Ruth in the clerk's office on her, the privilege of retiring. A lot of people don't have the chance to retire in the world we live in today, as young and vibrant and beautiful as she is. So, some people die on the job, but she doesn't have to do that. And so, congratulations to you and your service to the city, and multiple capacities and authorities, and just the things that you've done, that she's done. Appreciate you and enjoy your retirement and travel the world, whatever it is you want to do. Or sit at home and do nothing, that'd be nice too. So, again, congratulations. I have an issue. When I first, it kind of seems strange to say, but when I was first elected, my first meeting was January 2006, which is unbelievable, 10 years ago to the day. And a big issue during that campaign and during that first year or so was about the safety in City Hall. And personally, and just talking to a few people, citizens as well as a couple folks who work as staff in the city, that seems to be coming up again, the issue of such free access to City Hall, which I think, this is a public place, and I think people should have the privilege to come in and out, et cetera. But I was in the lobby the other day, and I just saw a few things that disturbed me. It's just kind of randomly, people can kind of come in and out, and there's no check balance. There's cameras, yes. There's buzzers, I think, in certain offices on the first floor and in this area. But this seems to be just too free in the world we live in. And I hate to say that, you shouldn't lock everything up, but I can't go to a basketball game without being wanded, and I get it. How is it that we can come into a place, I mean, there's probably as much, this is like Fort Knox across the hall here, especially during tax season, and I'm not wishing anything negative or unsafe, but the reality is, the world we live in, I think we could really, and should really, look at maybe securing this building and this facility a little bit better. And that's not a criticism, just a comment, and I look forward to, Mrs. Beck, we can talk offline about how something like that would work, and I know we've got some, maybe antiquated equipment in the back around safety and all of that, but if you have an officer in charge, or someone who's always here anyway, or a safety officer or something, maybe there's something that we can do to at least, if nothing else, a deterrent, and a presence is a deterrent. And right now, we don't have a presence, so there's no deterrent. We've been blessed to not have had any catastrophe or any major issues that I know of, although we have had some things that had to be redone on other floors because of individuals coming in unchecked, and so there's some concerns there. So, I just wanted to bring that up. That's something I'll be looking into over the next quarter, and we can, I'd like to talk to you and the administration about that. Finally, one of the citizens also mentioned about a trip it took to Kansas City concerning a strategy of dealing with violence, and not just violence, but disruptive behavior, I guess is another way to put it, in our community. And I really enjoyed the trip. I thought it was really valuable to go to get the information. I think I mentioned this before, but Erie, there were four other cities there. Erie had the best and most diverse representation of the local community, from educators at the Civic Institute to myself as an elected, to the police chief and probation, the city, the county. I mean, there was a lot of representation there. So, we'll be rolling that out. More information is out there, but I want to just say this real quick. I know my time is up. I think I heard a slight buzz over there. One of, one part of the strategy is described as a call-in. And I was at a sporting event the other day, and I heard someone say, well, nobody's going to be calling in and snitching and telling on people. That's not what the term "call-in" is referring to. What it is, is it's an opportunity that individuals who are very well-known, regrettably, in our community doing certain negative behaviors, they're going to be invited into a space to be told, "We know what you're doing. We want you to stop. We care about you, and we're going to help you to stop," with all these services. But if you don't, then the full arm of the law is going to be extended towards you. That's what the call-in is. It's not mandated, it's an invite, and it's not a snitch session, calling in on people in the community. So, I just wanted to put that out there as well, and I'll be bringing more information about that. Thank you, Mr. President, and for the extra time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, would like to welcome Councilwoman Arrington with us, and we look forward to a very productive year with you and another couple of years with you. Want to thank my fellow council members for this past year we have had. Thought it was a pretty good year. We had a balanced budget that we did pass, we were part of, and naturally, we look forward to another productive year this year, and we appreciate your service. I know we don't have any committee reports, because we're not officially handed any yet, but I did request with President Mersky, if I could please have the E again as my liaison, and he obliged, and we are going to get some more information from Executive Director Tan regarding the charter. So, with that being said, we definitely want to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Erie on that, and more to follow. Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Mr. Kwiatowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations on your new post, and thank you to David Brennan for his past year's service, pleasure serving with you. And welcome aboard, Ms. Arrington. I'm looking forward to working with you in the next, at least, couple of years. And to Ruth, I want to congratulate her on retirement, and I know she'll enjoy it. I'm not enjoying retirement, being semi-retired. It's not everything's cut out to be. Too young to retire. Curtis is laughing, but I'd rather be working, really. To Mr. McDonald, if the President will okay it until new committees are formed, I'd like to check with the Police Department on the procedures. I was talking to Mr. McDonald, and it's a little troubling on what happened, and, because I don't think this is one of our towing companies, and we do have a towing review board, but this wouldn't apply to that one, so.
Private business.
Yeah, and I don't know why they picked who they did, but that concerns me. I want to find out what the procedure was.
By all means.
If that's okay with you.
Yes.
And as, I agree with Curtis on security. I was here many years ago when they tried to put security in the building, and it was done rather unsuccessfully. And I can tell you that, when I had an office upstairs, it was a little disconcerting at night, when we had a meeting, and the cleaning people, not realizing what they did, had various offices open, and if those gates are open, you got people circumnavigating various offices here, which contain sensitive items and things that are, you know, should not be open to disapproval. But I agree with Curtis. I think, you know, you go to the courthouse or anywhere, and you're subject to at least, you know, I'm not saying, you know, shut it down for the public, but got to have a little control about going through many of the offices, and especially at night, and during the daytime, people just wandering halls is not a good thing, not without direction, you know. But I would agree with Curtis, it's probably time we look at that, but it needs to be handled a lot better than it was the first time around. So, with that, thank you, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski. Mr. Brennan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, congratulations, Councilman Mersky, for becoming president this year. I'm confident that you'll excel in your new role. And welcome, Sonia. I think we're all looking forward to your input on many issues that we've kind of come across in our city, and we look forward to, you know, your input as we go forward. And also, again, congratulations to Ruth Moore, and also, Armin Shemene, on your retirement from the city. You know, I'm definitely going to miss both of you, and, you know, be able to, you know, work with you on different things that's going on around our City Hall. Also, just lastly, we don't really have any council reports yet for any committees we're on, but there's several initiatives I would definitely want to kind of help move forward this year, and I think there's a lot of things that we can, we have kind of started. We want to push us forward to the benefit of our city, and I look forward to a great and prosperous year this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to Mrs. Arrington, looking forward to working with her within the next four years. Congratulations to you, Mr. President Mersky, looking forward to your leadership, and thank you, Professor David Brennan, for all the meetings that you called this year.
Filled up your schedule, didn't I?
I believe you got the record. You set a record, but they were all good meetings. Just want to joke a little bit. Of course, I'm going to miss Ruth Moore in the clerk's office. She has been very helpful, very professional in the work that she does. I think Friday is her last day, and we'll be there to bid you farewell. Concerning the right-of-way, I may be wrong, but the right-of-way from the curve to the sidewalk is in fact city-owned, or city property, but it is also the responsibility of the citizens to maintain it, to take care of. I'm not sure how to correct that, but it's a particular situation. We had that when I was with Pinnelec, when poles are in that right-of-way area. Pinnelec maintained the poles, but the citizen had to maintain that part of the property. The sidewalk, the city can come in and fix underground leaks, but it's also responsible, responsibility of the homeowners. So, maybe our legal department can look into it and give us a specific definition on how we, the city, look at it and share that with the concerned citizen. Mr. Armin, he's been around quite a while, and we wish him a happy retirement. What else do we have? And I think Mr. Curtis Jones, Councilman Jones, took about two of my minutes, so I'm going to cut it short. I think the bell might ring on me. Once again, we're looking forward to working together as a team, as we have always done, and we know the decisions that we make, we think it out, we meet on it, we don't all agree, and we vote accordingly to the information we received, the information we review, the information we read, and then we make a decision. I would say that our decisions are very positive, even though it may have a negative effect on an individual, we have to look at what's good for the entire city regardless. Thank you to all the individuals that put me back here for another term. I appreciate it, and I will do the best I can. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Just a few things to report. Christmas tree recycling goes on through January. You can put your Christmas tree out with your regular garbage night, and the city will come pick it up for you. Regarding the fire department, please watch your fireplaces and your portable furnaces. It's that time of year when the temperature drops, people are starting to use more heating sources than just their furnace, and we've seen an uptick in fires, and we want to keep everyone in the city safe. So, please, if you're going to use those things, I understand you have to keep warm, please use them according to the directions and keep them away from any loose objects and prevent them from tipping over. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Arrington, and for not only her election to council, and we look forward to serving with you, but also, this weekend, she had her Mothers Against Teen Violence Talent Show that I attended, and there's some really talented kids in this city, and I want to thank you for showcasing them and giving them an outlet for their creativity. Just a couple other things, I want to thank Councilman Brennan for his service as president. He did an excellent job, and we look forward to working together with you, continuing working together. And when we say "working together" up here, it isn't just us talking, and it's not just a slogan. In the four years that I've been on council, we don't always agree, but we always end the meeting in the back room on good terms, and we leave civilly talking to each other, and we can disagree, but we don't leave disagreeable. And I think that's one of the things that I'd like for us to continue, and I'm confident I can say, on behalf of all of council, we pledge to continue to do that, to work together for the citizens of Erie and for the best interests of the city of Erie. And finally, I just wanted to let council know, committee assignments will be out by Friday, so you will have those for a committee report for next time. And with that, that's my report. Administration?
Very quickly, as I like to be, on behalf of the administration, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Arrington. I'm looking forward to working with you in the coming years. Congratulations, and I'm sure that you'll do a great job. Mr. Mersky, congratulations on your appointment as council president, I guess. The appointment is election appointment, I guess those are the right words.
Very quickly, as I like to be, um, on behalf of the administration, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Arrington. I'm looking forward to working with you in the coming years. Um, congratulations, and, um, I'm sure that you'll do a great job. Mr. Mersky, congratulations on your, uh, appointment as council president, I, I guess. Um, the appointment is election appointment, I, I guess those are the right words. And, um, David, Mr. Brennan, thank you, um, for your service last year. It was a pleasure working with you. Bob, if you would like to meet with Mayor Sinin on a regular basis, let us know, um, the door is always open. But looking forward to a, a productive coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Stankovich, no report? All right, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
City council adjourns at 10:15. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.